On upgrade at this moment.
But the moral of the story is um we have to stay on top of these things because as expensive as they look today, they only increased in cost exponentially.
Yep.
Or some disastrous thing happens and then we have an emergency and D E P's here and everybody's here.
They show up to Ohio.
Yeah, they did. Got Secretary Pete here, no I'm kidding.
Did not go to Ohio because D E P.
Massachusetts, yeah, EPA.
So next steps, next steps, why don't we, can we address these three right now?
Yep.
Yeah, those are the resolutions.
Clarify on uh item F, uh the ultraviolet, the uh um the actual number is two oh eight seven hundred.
Okay.
Not two hundred.
Is that the total cost of the?
No, 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 I know, I, yeah Gabriella gave me the updated number, but somebody talked to me and I never got back to.
Senior citizen discount.
That is the actual.
Two oh eight seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Alright.
Say grand between friends. Come on Tony.
Yeah, so tha- that is the design permitting piece. At some point you'll, you know, once we're done with the design and we have a better understanding what the construction dollars are.
You really go.
It'd be another appropriation. Like I said, two years ago during the rate study, that was one roughly one point three dollars total project cost. The the boiler, I think we said three hundred and fifty thousand total project cost and then the siphon structure, we don't know. Not until we do that study and come up with some options.
Are you here to talk about the stormwater utility ordinance too? Oh, okay, great, alright, nevermind, we'll hold off, um.
Ryan's got all of us here today.
Yeah, efficient, um.
Are you entertaining a motion?
Yep. You guys here today.
Are you?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
The last item sixty one four, what?
Oh, no, I was just gonna um see if anybody else had any more questions before we let.
Pretty good.
I do, now that this has changed from two oh eight, does this not have to be dealt with separately to amend it?
No, we do have to vote on every single one, yeah separately.
Separately.
No, but he's saying because on the agenda it's two hundred thousand, we don't have to correct them out.
No, we just make a motion to amend the amount and then.
I didn't, I was thinking that you're gonna just, which you could.
Yeah, I changed it on the resolution, so if you guys could do uh two oh eight seven hundred, that would be helpful.
Certain.
Awesome, no problem.
So it has, I'd make a motion to amend it to two oh eight seven hundred.
We're not doing motions yet.
Okay.
Not doing motions yet. We're gonna, we're gonna go to, we're gonna follow the agenda and we're gonna go to Matt Morris next.
Wait, don't we wanna vote on them? Cause they're on the agenda, we vote on them as we go?
But it um.
I just figured to get him out of your way.
It's out of order.
However you wanna. Oh, alright, that's not a problem.
One more person on the agenda before.
Other questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks Kenny.
Thank you.
I understand where you're going.
Now we have um DPW Director Matthew Morris here to talk about the roadway debris ordinance.
Night Glory.
Good night.
Hi guys, how are you, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, Mother Nature throwing a wrench in St. Patty's Day tonight.
Yep.
It'll be melted by the end of the week.
Yeah, fifties actually. Um, so just quickly, um, just an ordinance, um, I'd like to get uh your approval on, I don't know if you, did you get them a copy?
Yep.
I've all got copies. Um, there's a few things I'm just trying to accomplish with this, um, lots of phone calls, uh, just a couple examples, um, contractors and homeowners, uh, snow plowing their driveway. So if you can picture somebody plowing their driveway, pushing the snow across the street into the neighbor's house.
Mm-hmm.
So we get a lot of complaints about this, uh, also snow blowing into the street, um, snow blowing into your neighbor's yard, uh, snow blowing it into the parks, all these kinds of things. Um, the next is sediment runoff. So if you've got a property, we're expending a lot of resources on properties, um, that they put, they have materials uh uh on their property and after heavy rainfalls, it comes into the public way. And we've gotta get our equipment out there to clean it up, our sleepers, it drains up our catch basins. Uh, so we expend a lot of resources cleaning up after this sediment runoff from property. Um, the third thing that we have a lot of issues with is sub pumps and uh gutter uh rainwater property runoff. And I see a lot of it here in town is they'll actually run a drain line right out to the curb and right out into the road. And in the winter time, what we get is obvious, the thaw and the refreeze uh rips up the asphalt. It creates hazards uh for the roadway, so we have to salt it all the time. Um, and then also what would fall in this is the, in the fall time, we have leaf cleanup. So we get calls and complaints all the time while people blowing their leaves off their property and again into the road, into the sidewalk, uh, dangers for motorcycles, bicycles. Um, as I searched through the ordinances, there wasn't really much for us to kinda have. So if I knocked on the door, I could ask them nicely, but I didn't have anything that could sort of, you know, if they didn't comply right away, I didn't have anything to justify why I'm doing it. So I think it's important for the town to have this, uh, so we sort of have a leg to stand on.
When you're talking sediment and uh what was the question, what what kind of materials you're saying as far as running down?
One, one specifically.
Non asphalt driveways or something you're saying?
So that's a big thing here in town is non asphalt driveways. Um, we're, we're gonna be working on what the slope is and what, you know, what kind of materials we wanna see. But right now we have a lot of non asphalt driveways and the slope of the driveway is so significant. If they don't use the proper material, you know, on that, like say they just use a regular hard pack or something, the first rain that comes, it just comes all downhill. And it runs off their driveway and into the road. And this one street is uh specifically, uh, we got a call and complaint from the neighbor that says every time it rains, this guy's driveway is coming down the road. So I went up myself to go investigate it and I found a gentleman in a wheelchair holding a shovel, cleaning up the rocks from their neighbor's driveway. So I said, you know, it's not fair to him, it's not fair to the town wasting the resources after every rainfall, cleaning out those catch basins. Um, so I think it's, it's time we get this in the ordinance book and give us a leg to stand on.
Yeah, there's um one street, it's on State Street, and one house anyways, and I mean.
What color is it?
There used, there used to be a tree.
Yeah, it's exactly that though, they have like a sump pump or or something where they are just, it is just a stream of water. And they live right on this bend, so it froze like every single time.
There's one on High Street like that now that you mention it.
Springfield Street.
It's gotta be, I mean, I don't know how they dealt with, my house will, will flood certain times of the year in the cellar, but they left like space between the stone foundation and the cement floor. And the water actually comes out and goes through some tunnel where it doesn't go out into the road and stuff. It just, they made it where it drains into the, the hill itself.
Leaches into your hill, right?
I think the moral, the moral of this is if it's on your property, it should stay on your property.
Correct.
Yep.
It shouldn't be out into the public way.
Well, as far as gravel and stuff and like that, but I mean, obviously people with asphalt driveways, you, you're not gonna control the rain not going into the road.
So you're proposing that the ordinance committee take this up?
Yep.
Well, what I see actually, I think the way it's written is just an amendment to an existing uh article, so it's being removed and replaced.
I think it still has to go to the council amendment, yeah, to the council.
Yeah, we have to have a couple of public hearings or, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, usually goes, there's an ordinance subcommittee.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, yep.
But this is awesome, you did all the work, so.
Right, no, I think it's great, I think the only thing that I would mention here, and this isn't really in your pur- purview, but something I've noticed specifically in the area that I live in, I grew up in a very rural part of Palmer and now I live in an area where I have sidewalks. Um, and I've noticed that people park on the sidewalks. One, it um makes it difficult for me to walk my dogs on the sidewalk, um, for people who may be in a wheelchair or have a stroller to kind of use the sidewalks for their purpose. And right now, I live uh on um off the street that has the closed bridge, so we don't have through traffic. But when that bridge opens, that becomes a very busy street and the traffic travels pretty um, yeah, pretty fast. And there's also a couple of kind of curves where you can't really see around the corner, so when, if I have to walk in the street cause somebody's parked on my sidewalk, um, I might not see a car coming or they might not see me walking my dogs. So I, I don't know if that's something that is already in our ordinance, that's something we can add, something we talked to the police department about, but I just think that.
I'll talk to the police about it.
I know it's a police issue, I know it's not a DPW issue, um.
No, it was, there's actually one, he's already retired, that was his, his thing was if you had a tire on the sidewalk, you know, you would get.
Sidewalks aren't constructed to withhold the weight of a vehicle.
Right, and it's, as we've, you know, uh, Ryan and Matt and I have walked those sidewalks and you can see the damage that these cars have caused by driving over them and parking on them. And so that's a whole other part of the issue of parking on sidewalks, is that they make them inaccessible for the exact purpose that they're there for. And to um the weight of the vehicles destroy them. So, I don't know, like I said, if it could be added or we just have to talk to the police or whatever, but.
Aren't they looking at um, what's the, what's the street right down? Um, St. Joe's.
Yeah, the St. Joe's parking, like up there, yeah, I forgot.
Talking about no parking.
On one side, yeah. The other signs.
Yeah, they park on the sidewalk there somewhat, and there's still room to walk down it.
We just made one side no.
And I guarantee I know the reason why is because people are lunatics and driving and they're worried about their, their stuff getting hit and, you know. I actually, quite frankly, did it the other day right at my house to be able to get vehicles in and out is to, you know, there's still this much sidewalk, but if I was to just park it on that road there, I mean, I've seen it, people just plow into it, you know. I had a guy come to do work one time, eh, it was first day to come there, he's got his trailer, he's got flashes on, they pushed his trailer and truck right into my stone wall. Because they're, you know, they're, they're texting and, you know, so I, I mean, it's.
So let's just go to the subcommittee.
Yep.
Correct.
Uh, while we have you, Matt, I have something for you, um, there is, you know the town parking lot right next to Depot Park?
Yep.
Um, there is a pet salon next to the jeweler in that plaza.
Okay.
And the owner of the jewelry store has asked if we could put in um some doggy waste, you know, the dog waste stations that we have at the park?
Yeah.
On the corner of the park, maybe one of the islands there, at the parking lot. Because there's one at the park, but he said that because they're leaving the groomers, they don't go very far and they just use the town parking lot as a waste area.
Yeah.
And it would be helpful if we just put.
Be taking it home with them?
Uh, well, at least it wouldn't be left behind.
With a glove on it.
I was, I was just asked.
You already got people trained to pick up their dog poop.
Right, but I guess we have signs that say please pick up after your dog and we have the bags already on them, so I don't know if we have any extra of those.
Oh, supplying with bags.
That's all, that's all I'm asking, yeah, I was asked by the local business owners to, so people could pick up them.
Supplying with bags, you're saying, not, not a place to dispose of it.
Correct, signage in bags, so that people can pick up after themselves.
Doggy waste station.
Yep.
Yes.
You got it.
Thank you, sir.
Talked a lot about wastes tonight.
Pick up poop, put it in a plastic bag that doesn't disintegrate ever.
Great, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome, I don't know, uh.
I got one more before you go.
Yeah, sure.
I'm looking at the um, and I know this is all draft stuff, right, the capital plan. Um, the the turf, the turf is material.
Yes.
That's in the twenty four plan.
Yes.
Which means it wouldn't happen this year.
Until July.
Say again?
Until July.
Won't happen until July, right, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously we'd want it there a little earlier, cause season starts, what, first week of April?
Yeah.
So we'd want it there earlier, but.
Yeah, I mean, I might do what I did last year where, you know, I'll try to front load the capital stuff through the budget subcommittee meeting. Things like vehicles we might wanna order earlier just because of their lead time.
Yeah.
That's what I did last year, anything that was gonna take forever to try to get, I tried to do even earlier than June.
Do you have more than just the police cruisers and your vehicles this year?
There's a bunch of DPW vehicles, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious, I haven't had a chance to, to dig in, so.
I hope you guys are ready, I'm happy to come back and talk about that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Budget subcommittee meeting.
Awesome.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, now we can do our resolutions. I.
Drive safe tonight.
You too, and um I hope all of your employees stay safe and warm during this s- snowstorm-ish. Whatever's gonna happen in the next twenty four hours.
Possible two feet.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have a resolution for sixty eight thousand dollars for a new boiler design at the wastewater treatment plant. Would you like to read the resolution?
Town of Palmer, Town Council Agenda, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Resolution Number two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen. Purpose to appropriate sixty eight thousand dollars from sewer surplus for the design of a new boiler at wastewater treatment plant. Motion to transfer sixty eight thousand dollars from sewer surplus to a capital project fund for the design of a new boiler at wastewater treatment plant.
Make motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to um a resolution for two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred dollars for ultraviolet process at wastewater treatment plant.
Town of Council, March, I'm sorry, Town Council Agenda, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Resolution two zero two three dash eighteen. Purpose to appropriate two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred dollars from sewer surplus for ultraviolet process at wastewater treatment plant. Motion is to transfer two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred dollars from sewer surplus to a capital project fund for ultraviolet process at wastewater treatment plant.
Make a motion.
Second.
Do you not have to make a motion to?
Oh, to change it.
Resolve this?
Two oh eight. We're gonna change it to the two oh eight first.
Seven.
No.
It was two hundred?
Well, he just said it in his.
I just said.
But he said it, yeah, we don't have to make an amendment.
It's been read into the record.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what matters.
Thank you. Sorry.
So we have a motion and second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have a resolution for thirty five thousand dollars for a main junction siphon vault design out of sewer surplus.
Town Council Agenda, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Resolution Number two oh two three dash nineteen. Purpose to appropriate thirty five thousand dollars from sewer surplus for design of main junction siphon vault. Motion is to transfer thirty five thousand dollars from sewer surplus to a capital project fund for design of main junction siphon vaults.
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion?
No. No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And um, so our next resolution is one we haven't talked about yet. It's for three thousand four hundred and eighty nine dollars for a senior center hot water expansion tank replacement, Ryan, if you wanna give us a.
Yes, the um boilers being, uh, the boiler was just worked on at the senior center and the hot water heater went, so.
Cool.
We're getting a new hot water, we have to get a new hot water heater.
Nice. Hot water is important. Alright, Bob?
Certainly, Town Council Agenda, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Resolution Number two oh two three dash twenty. Purpose is to approve a transfer of three thousand four hundred and eighty nine dollars from capital stabilization to pay for replacement of a hot water expansion tank at the senior center. Motion is to transfer three thousand four hundred and eighty nine dollars from capital stabilization account eight three nine five zero zero two to general fund Memorial Hall Building Maintenance Account Number zero one one nine three five dash five eight five zero zero to pay for replacement of a hot water expansion tank.
Make a motion.
Second.
Oh, questions?
Yep.
Is an expansion tank different than a hot water heater?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, cause three thousand seems a lot, the hot water heater is five hundred.
Yeah.
Well, it's a part of the boiler.
Right.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know how to explain that.
Yeah, alright, I gotcha, thank you, just curious.
Excuse me, Ryan, I do have the, all the information on the expansion tank, because I thought I had to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, he explained what it was, I, I wasn't clear about that.
It's ready to leave.
Thank you. I'm good on it. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, uh, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your fellow seniors, Phil.
That's right, that's right.
Not that I'll ever use it, but.
Oh, yes you will.
No, I won't.
Now we have, we have a resolution for the stormwater utility ordinance, so that means it's your time to shine.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So, I can just, I guess, start by explaining where our proposal is, um, a lot of.
Who are you?
Sorry, my name is Tracy Adiemsy, I'm with Time Bond.
Okay.
I'm a vice president and planner at Time Bond, um, and I do a fair amount with stormwater, um, and specifically with the MS four. That's under, we talked about the NIPD's permit earlier, NIPD's covers wastewater treatment discharges, but it also covers stormwater discharges as well. So back in two thousand and three, Palmer got um pulled into the program under the municipal small sewer, separate storm sewer system program, the MS four system. Um, where there was a lot of requirements that were put on the community for meeting um discharges from non-point source, um, non-point sources. So that's stormwater. That permit was revised back in twenty sixteen, which um added a lot more prescriptive requirements, which also added a lot more expense to communities to meet the permit requirements. So it required um outfall inspections and sampling. Uh, catchment uh junction manholes, so um manholes where systems come together before they go into an outfall. Now there's a requirement for you to inspect those and sample them. Um, there's requirements for different stormwater um ordinances to be put in place. There's requirements for operation and maintenance um re- relative to the town system. There's requirements to install best management practices to address nutrients. So similar to what you heard on the wastewater side, EPA's putting some of these um new requirements on the stormwater side as well. So the proposal that's in front of you, um, I guess this is, I'll say multi, multi-part. One is to look at um a stormwater utility. So that is akin to, you know, a water um utility or a wastewater utility where you have, um, you know, a fee that goes into a separate account that's used for, specifically for those infrastructure services. Um, mass, um, general law has allowed for the creation of a stormwater utility so that communities can obtain a fee for the services that Palmer's providing to its, its residents and businesses to address stormwater. And then that would go into its own enterprise account um to be used for a variety of stormwater requirements. Um, and those requirements in- include, I know I've listed off a few, but includes like catch basin cleaning as well, you know, so there's, there's things that are probably currently being funded out of the general fund and maybe out of the wastewater fund, um. And this is an opportunity to capture some of those costs from all the users specifically for stormwater. Um, we often look at impervious surface as a way to identify what someone's contributions may be to the stormwater system. So um part of the proposal here is to look at, you know, what makes sense for Palmer, for stormwater ordinance. Um, there's also public outreach associated with this to kinda let people know, you know, this is, this is a, for some, a newer concept. Um, why are we being, you know, charged for rainwater falling on our property to, to kind of discuss what some of the water quality implications are, what are some of the requirements that the town is required to, to pay for? Um, you know, the services that you're providing for the community and to meet your current permit. Also included in, in this proposal is um an update of your existing stormwater ordinances that address um stormwater management from new developments within town. So I think currently there are three different ordinances that address stormwater um management on development properties. So, you know, we've had some initial discussions with um with Ryan and, and town staff to, that there's a desire to consolidate those into one, to make it a little less, you know, confusing and uh just streamline that process. So those are the components of the proposal that's in front of you today.
Very good. So I either don't put a driveway in and everything washes away.
Right.
Or.
Well, you just have to go at the end of your driveway after every storm and scoop it back up and throw it back in your. Along with your dog poop, right?
Um, you did keep all the mark to mark. I know we're really early and we, obviously this is to start the ball rolling. Um, but you have in here to, to, to develop a stormwater utility ordinance where there would be a fee. Obviously you can't answer the question where what type of fee or what kind of fee are we looking at as a, a community the size of Palmer?
We could talk about it.
What are other towns doing?
Fifteen bucks, you could, to everything that we talked about.
It's town wide, right, it's not just.
It's not gonna be just the sewer users, it's gonna be town wide.
Correct.
Okay.
Residents and non-residents, um.
Except municipalities, they're excluded.
It, that, that, yeah, that, that's one of the questions, you know.
It says right there.
I didn't even see it, I didn't see that part.
But, but yes, but you could, you know, exclude municipal properties. We started looking at numbers as part of the asset management um grant program that I think we've worked on the last couple of years with the town. So we have looked at, you know, high level costs and what this might look like. And to be honest, um, you don't have to set the fee so that you're recouping all of your stormwater costs at this point. Um, so it could be set, you know, I think Brian and I were talking fifteen, twenty dollars per single family house.
Per year.
Per year.
Right.
You know, so that's something that you can start gaining um, uh, some, some money to start addressing some of the issues that are in front of you on the stormwater side. And what we would do, um, some further analysis that we would do is take a look at the non-residential uses and see like, okay, if we're gonna charge twenty dollars for a single family house, what's that equivalent impervious surface? And then I've got, uh, you know, a.
Kmart.
Yeah, 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 supermarket, you know, whatever, something that has a large parking lot and a lot of impervious surface that may be a hundred of a single family resident use, so do you do, you know, a hundred by twenty. So those are some of the, you know, additional assessment that we would be looking at.
Got it, understood.
Pretty calm.
It, it is very common, it's, you know, what, ten, twenty years ago, I think Chicopee was the first one that they set a fee twenty five dollars, just, you know, start getting some money in so that they can, you know, start addressing C S O issues. Um, and now it is because of the new requirements from this NIPD's MS four permit, more and more communities are looking at ins- um instituting stormwater utilities so that they have some sorts of funding to pay for the requirements that you need to do to meet your, your new permit.
Yeah, MS five is going to be well over a hundred thousand dollars.
Got it.
Who pays the bill today? What budgets are covered in?
General fund.
Yeah, so I mean, this way it's a way to isolate it, you know, goes towards some type of capital.
It creates an enterprise fund.
It does, that does.
Right, right, exactly, and we're struggling to put this in the DPW budget.
Right, so it would create an enterprise fund where all that money would go into and then the, whatever projects or things that come up storm or water related would come out of that account instead of the general fund.
And, and the other way too, and this is something that we've talked about because like, something that I'd like, I mean, it's aspirational, but I, I'd really like to have the impact on the residential homeowner be as little as possible. And so, you know, doing this study, we, we can have a better idea of how much impermeable surface there is, how much of it is industrial, commercial users. And, you know, it just, that amount of data helps inform us as to, you know, how we're gonna have that structure going forward.
And that's in scope of this plan, okay, yeah.
Right, so, and if somebody's gonna actually go out and measure my driveway and see if I, well, like my house has no uh gutters, everything goes into the grass other than the driveway. Which I obviously have no control over the rain, but.
So what we would do and what a lot of communities do is set one single rate, and I think that's what, you know, Ryan was talking about as well, setting one single rate for all single family homes. So we're not going out and measuring, you know, every, every. So we're not going out and measuring, you know, every, every parcel. There's, there is some data that's available to us from a statewide data source that, you know, has identified impervious surface. So it, it works out well as a good planning tool for us so that we can figure out like, what is that approximate? We call it um, equivalent residential unit. So, you know, what's the approximate impervious area for a single family house? But for, and, and this makes it for ease of billing as well, is you set one rate for single family houses. And, you know, then people aren't coming and saying, you know, well, you, you say I have twenty-five hundred square feet. I only have, you know, twenty-four fifty, you know, so you're, you're not, you're not going down to the.
Macro level.
Make an exception for Phil though.
What about multifamilies? Would they get charged more?
That's what she just said.
Right.
Yeah, she was talking, like, so she used single family as an example, but so there's single family, multifamily, like, commercial.
Right.
Industrial complexes. But some communities will say, single family might include one to three family units.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
But then if you're like at an eight family unit or, you know, you've got a thirty-two, you know, unit condo complex, that's different.
Like your place is what?
You can cut it off at three.
Two, yours is a three family, you got three times the amount of driveway I got. You, you need to top it up.
I should get subsidized.
All right, so.
I'm creating jobs still.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
I, I, I just, this, this whole thing, just no offense to nobody, but this just totally rubs me the, the wrong way that the state just keeps enacting all this stuff and we just keep bleeding people. I know everyone here looks at me like I'm mental or whatever. I don't care. But you just keep, well, you just keep bleeding people. This is something that the town enacted back when I was first on the council. I remember it happening. And I've been screaming about it since. And nobody, well, you know, we're here to, okay, you know, take care of what you got to take care of. But when the state throws something down and forcefully makes you, make your residents pay extra money for something that they didn't ask for or whatever. And if they don't, then they get fined and this and that. That's just type of tyranny. If the state wants this, in my opinion, this should come out of, we already pay taxes. I mean, take someone's paycheck on how much you get taxed before you get your paycheck. Then you go buy stuff you get taxed on, da, da, da. And every year, no matter what, a new, we'll, we'll call it, it's an enterprise fee. It's not a tax, excuse me. But you just keep taking more and more money from people that don't have it and prices of things go up. So I'm totally against the state telling you, you have to do something. And then us as a counselor, figure out how we can go and rob the locals for that money to take care of what the state's forcing us versus being speaking up. And when this all started, is all these towns get together and state of state, look, you want this? That's great. We understand. But at least, look, if we're going to be partners, let's be partners. This is what it's cost us to do this, okay? I'd be willing to pay fifty percent of whatever it costs and the state coughs up the rest of the money. But just to be bullied into paying more money is totally rubs me the wrong way.
We're not voting on a tax or we're not voting on the fund or anything tonight.
Not yet. You're gonna.
We're just asking.
So I'm just saying that. What we're doing though is we're spending taxpayers' money to figure out a way to tax them.
Well, you're not wrong.
I know I'm not.
For something that was mandated from the state.
From the state that nobody has, who needs to holler at them.
Yeah, not, not, all of us could get together and go knock on the governor's door and it's not, we're not going to change it.
You, you think that, but see, that's what's wrong with this world is they think, okay, it's not going to happen. But you just keep getting other towns on board and other towns and other towns. Pretty soon when you got this whole three hundred and sixty-five communities screaming at the state saying, listen.
You'd have a bunch of Newtons and Wellesleys that would say, hey, we want this.
Well, good, then pay for it. Out of your pocket. Just come right up and fork it out and give it up on your free will.
This isn't going to resolve.
No, no, I'm just expressing my.
I understand. Can we move forward, please?
All right, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no more questions, I'm gonna take a vote. Or actually, I'm going to ask Bob to read the resolution.
Sure. Town council agenda, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one. Purpose: To approve the use of the American Recovery Plan Act, or ARPA. Funds in the amount of sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars to pay for consulting services to develop regulations for the storm water utility. Motion is to appropriate sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars of ARPA funds account two four one, two three zero, two one, for consulting services to develop regulations for the storm water utility.
I make a motion.
I will second.
Any discussion?
No.
None. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed.
Thank you. All right, up next.
Actually, can I change? I'm opposing also.
Um, that would mean that it wouldn't be funded.
Not necessarily. Did we decide that ARPA was a two-thirds?
No, ARPA's not.
Does ARPA come from taxpayer dollars?
No, ARPA was the.
It's federal.
That was COVID money.
Federal.
Federal money. It's still taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
But it's already there. They don't have to, yes.
What's the vote?
Yes.
Three, two.
Okay.
All right.
Four, two, I'm sorry.
One, two, three, four. Yeah, four, two.
Barry, that's awesome, four, two.
Up next we have the Converse code review discussion.
Thank you, Tony.
Bye, everyone. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Stacy, for staying.
Tracy.
You too, Tony.
Tracy.
Tracy, I'm sorry. It's late. It's been a long day. My bad. You as well, thank you.
So, uh, a couple of months ago, I was asked to investigate the costs of using Converse as a municipal building. So we hired these architects. They came out. They did a full review of the building. They wrote up this thing based upon using the building for three uses, office space, a senior center, and a maker space. It's, uh, I, I sat down and talked with them pretty extensively. And, um, I mean, a, any one of these uses, obviously the maker space would trigger the most code requirements because of the air-changing exhaust requirements that would come with using heavy machinery. But, but a senior center is typically, you know, under twenty thousand square feet. This building is eighty-eight thousand square feet. So you'd have to fix everything in the building just to use those twenty thousand square feet because the nature of the building is so old. There is zero fire suppression system in this building. Everything in this building is materials from the nineteen twenties. So every, as, as, as Tony was saying about the boiler at the wastewater treatment plant, Converse has all of those materials.
And then some.
Lead paint.
Right.
Asbestos. Especially in the bathrooms. Every single one of those tiles is asbestos.
Awesome.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah. Oh, please.
How are people allowed to use the building right now?
Because um, there has been no change in use. We use the building primarily for it, it's.
It's the gym.
Recreation.
It's the bathrooms down there. It's the cafeteria space.
Right.
Are, are we missing pages from this report or is this complete?
As far as I know, it's complete.
The only reason why I ask that is because I thought that we had asked for a report that included dollar figures on how much it would cost us to change things over.
Right.
But there's not a dollar figure in here.
Because that can't be supplied.
How much did we pay for this? I'm just curious. Because I know we asked for that specifically, that we wanted or needed a dollar.
Ten grand, twelve grand?
No, 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 no. This was like, at the most, fifty-two hundred bucks.
No, I just, the only thing is, is that we asked you to come back to us with a number so that we could go back to people in the community and say, hey, it's going to cost the town this much money to convert over the space.
But the, they could, they can't tell you that because they, there's a million different things that could change a number by two or three or four million dollars depending upon materials that people use.
Right. I get it. I understand. I just.
So, so we're already talking.
But, but for example, I mean, just, just spending up to seven hundred thousand dollars triggers all the code changes.
I did see that. Yes, that, that up to thirty percent would trigger a ARPA or a, um, what is it? ADA and all that other stuff. Yes.
All the, all the twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Correct. I mean, you know, you're talking millions and millions of dollars.
Right. Which is the number that we need so that we can go back to the community and say, hey, listen, if, if the town of Palmer is going to keep and renovate that building, it's going to cost us this price tag.
But I think it's already so exorbitant. You, I mean, you're in the ballpark with more than ten million dollars.
Exactly. But that's the, that is what we need to portray to the community because the.
Ryan's point, until we pick a specific, there's no way they can put a price tag.
Just with this, right?
What materials are going to cost?
Fire suppression. Electrical, which is heating, all the HVAC.
All new bathrooms.
New bathrooms.
A accessibility.
Elevators, yep.
I guess you can board it up. You got, um, all the.
Stairwells.
Yeah, all the stairwells, that whole.
Firewalls.
Auditorium, everything.
So the rating, you have different fire ratings, one hour rating, half an hour rating.
You're using.
I, I get it. We had a community meeting though, where the community decided that the majority of the people that showed up to our meeting decided they wanted to see the town try to do something with that building. But obviously after seeing this.
It's cost prohibitive.
It, it, we're cost prohibitive, right?
So recently I took another set of developers through Converse. These guys um, do housing development. They're interested in making a proposal to resurrect the fifty-five plus housing.
I saw that in your report.
I could invite these folks back and they could talk about what their project might cost. And then that would give you an idea of what it would take a private developer to rehab this building. I mean, we're talking twenty-five, thirty million dollars.
Right, a private developer who's not paying prevailing wage.
Correct.
Right. Which is like, you know.
Do you give them a price what we'll sell it to them for?
I did not. That, I can't, I can't set a price for the building. I mean.
I know another developer that, they said they approached us, you know, a year or two ago on the building. That's the same thing they wanted to do. And maybe back then they were told no because we had other ideas.
Well, assessed value right now is two point three million. It's in the report.
It's in the report.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily charge somebody two point three million dollars for the building.
I'm just saying. You said it was eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet or eight, or eighty-eight thousand square feet. Right, so that's a big building, right?
Well, Ryan, how much do you want for it all? Could be a nice house.
All right. So that would be a big.
It is the crown.
You would get the higher MS four.
I actually think that's a good idea.
What? To invite the developers?
To talk about their project, right? Because it'll give everybody a sense.
Their proposed project, right, yes.
Because they're going to have to do the same damn things that we have to do.
So, at least it'll be used, you know.
Because what is our next step? We put it out for bid for sale?
Well, I, I mean, I would write another RFP.
Yep.
A request for proposals.
Limiting it to what though? You know what I mean? Right.
Housing.
Right.
At any rate, I think it was money well invested. For the little that we spent, I think.
No, I agree one hundred percent. Yes.
One hundred thousand.
One hundred, yeah, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
Right. We didn't spend an absorbent amount of money. We got a report with a lot of information, right.
Yeah, I shared this report with the developers and, you know, they were like, yeah, that's all the stuff we're going to have to do.
Right.
Yeah, they know what they have to do going in.
All right. So it was just to review.
Yeah, just to discuss.
Yeah, if you, if you guys are interested, I can see if they're available and.
Or if they just put that together and give it to you to talk about. I mean, it's.
Right, plus.
We don't need like a whole PowerPoint suit, you know.
But here's the thing too, is that a lot of potential development doesn't want to be released publicly until they're ready to go because they don't want the competition, so.
Correct.
So they may or may not want to share.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right.
He could come with bullet points.
Right, exactly.
They could just like, like Mark said, share general information.
Right, high level, right.
Just they can be anonymous.
Well, you could probably look up however many square feet you're saying, what, what's the cost of just adding a sprinkler system?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Right, yeah.
I did a similar building, an old mill building, uh, back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. That cost twenty-four million for ninety-six units of housing.
Yeah, and the, the school going down State Street on the left was all done in the condos too, and they're beautiful. I can't remember, what school is that?
This town?
What town are we talking?
Oh, Springfield. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought everyone could read, read my mind.
Nope.
Yeah, they did the same thing with the school and it's beautiful.
Yep. Is there anything else you wanted to discuss on this, Ryan?
Nope. I wanted you guys to have the opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other new business?
Yes. Um, I would like to propose that we send the governor a letter thanking her for adding that Palmer four million dollars into the budget. Even though it is not approved yet, it just shows that we're paying attention. And, and that we're definitely appreciative for her putting Palmer in her budget for the four million dollars for the rail station. And I don't think that, I think we should just send out a letter of, hey, thank you, blah, 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 you know, from the town council. Hey, you know, if we got it, we got it, you know?
Doesn't hurt.
It does not hurt.
Good idea, thank you.
Agreed.
So I would like to make a motion that we send a thank you letter to the governor thanking her for her proposal for adding Palmer to the proposed budget.
I'll second it if that's the right thing to do.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there any subcommittee reports?
No.
None. Cool. Town managers report?
Uh, I just want to say that, so this Friday, we will have the pre-bid, uh, meeting at the Church Street Bridge. It was going to be tomorrow, but with the uncertainty on the weather, you know, twenty feet, one inch, whatever we're going to get. We moved it to Friday. The, uh, we, we've had good luck with the information we were sending back to the state engineers. All that's settled. Uh, the only thing next on deck is a local conservation commission meeting. That will record the order of conditions. We'll be out to bid. We're back on track for, uh, best case scenario, opening the bridge later this year.
Good.
But yeah, if anybody is available at ten AM on Friday, meet me down at the Church Street Bridge.
Oh, I will be there. With my dog and some confetti.
And doggy bags. Do you want me to bring the doggy bags?
I always bring the doggy bags. Yeah, thank you.
People get that one.
You'll be working, Carl.
Yeah, every day.
I had a question about the Duke Track project. Who's, is there going to be like a clerk of the works on that or are we, is Matt going to oversee it? Who's overseeing like when it starts construction?
Uh, actually, I, I mean, I can't speak for him, but I think somebody who might be interested, uh, is Matt Merciniak.
Right, athletic director, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Is there a timeline on that yet?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in there.
June, June should be the substantial completion on that.
Okay, I missed it.
Construction start.
I can see the.
Construction start date says June ninth, talking about the track, right?
Yeah.
And it says construction start date, June ninth, uh, final completion, September twenty-first.
Oh, got that backwards.
I can see the athletic director having an interest in the project, but I just can't see him.
He's not a general contractor.
Managing, like this is a huge project to have.
Does he have the qualifications is all I'm asking.
Well, the clerk of the works usually signs things in as they come in. They don't oversee the project.
I'm not comfortable with an AD being a general contractor.
Personally, I don't love that idea.
Yeah, but there will be a clerk of the works on the project. Who will be, I don't know.
The other thing I noticed in your report and that will be coming probably to us eventually at some point is that there are currently four, uh, retail marijuana establishments trying to vie for three permits.
Yep.
When and if that comes to the council, um, I am publicly stating that I am for adding one more permit to allow all four, if they get approved through the state, to do business in Palmer. Because it has to come back to the council to up the limit.
Yep.
So.
My, my, I, my only question is, what happens if we say no? What legally can happen to us?
I don't think anything. We have three, we have three. And I think the first person, the first three to cross the finish line are the three that, that get it.
Right.
There are no promises anymore. There's no more.
No, but I'm saying.
It's, no, but I'm saying, like, if we were to say no, and somebody challenges that and says, what?
It's in our ordinance that we only allow three. So if the council doesn't, right, if the council doesn't approve anymore, then it's like liquor licenses, we can't.
Answer to that, I think there's case law yet.
Right.
That's, that's where I'm going.
We would be, we would be the one to find out.
I believe, without reading it, didn't we leave the language in there to, the council basically has the final say.
We do, right, we do have the final say, right. And the reason why we started off at five and went to three is because we were told that once you release the, out of the barn, let the horses out of the barn, you can't reel them back in, you can't take permits back.
Well, no one's using them any right now, so it doesn't.
Correct, nobody is using them right now. I would personally love to see what happens when we have one or two open and see what kind of progress we have, but I am not, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not gonna impede a business who wants to open up in town who has all the proper permitting through the state, that just needs us to approve a permit for them.
So, so that's a question, right?
That is a question, right.
A question, so, how many of them have gone through the CCV?
CCC?
CCC.
CCC, sorry.
I think only one currently. Silver Therapeutics is the only one currently permitted, right?
No, there's, there's two with provisional cannabis control commission approval.
So two currently, okay. The two that are already constructing?
Uh, Silver, and I'm trying to remember the other one with provisional, I think it's Cali Cannabis, I'm not a, I, top of my head, I don't remember.
Which would be the corner of Sheer.
The hole in the ground, right, right.
Yep.
I have it in an email, I'd have to go back.
I'm just curious, and you're absolutely right, who, who currently is. I know Silver is, because they're just waiting to get their doors open.
Yeah, correct.
And I know that the other two or other three will be vying for the other two, so.
Right, but I also agree, first come, first served, let's giddy up, because the market's pretty saturated.
Yeah, wicked saturated.
The market is saturated, and actually, I just read something in Northampton where they had a bunch of them, and they're already getting eaten up by the bigger ones, so.
Thirteen up there now, right?
So the, there were a lot.
That as some of these smaller players may go through the process, I don't know where their funding is at personally, or how they may fall off, I have no clue, but.
Right.
I kinda think market forces may determine that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything new on the NICE?
Yeah, we met recently, uh, as a NICE committee, we went through approximately twenty-two property record cards. We prioritized our plan of action. Obviously, you know, we're front-loading a lot of work on Gate Street. And, uh, yeah, I mean, a lot of it right now is gonna be enforcement letters.
Yeah.
Uh, some of them, you know, we're working cooperatively, like the house that's next to Les Auto, Les Auto owns that house. You know, he, he has plans that will take that house down and probably expand, expand his parking lot or whatever. But, you know, we're working with him on that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Jessica, I have a question for you. Can you speak right now? Yes, personally, you.
Okay.
You're on the pole, the light's on you. You're part of the superintendent committee, is there anything you can update us with that, or?
Um, there's not anything that I can update right now, since everything that we do is in executive session and confidential, but tomorrow, we've already interviewed on two different nights. Tomorrow, as long as we're not shoveling ourselves out of too much snow, we plan to stay on track with our last night of interviews, and then we will make our recommendation to the school committee. Um, the school committee meets on Wednesday, and then, you know, then we kind of turn it over to the school committee's hands. And they go and do with the information that we provide them.
Started off like twenty of them, and you wheeled it down to like eight or six, or something like that?
Yeah, I think there were about twenty-five applicant, applicants, and now we're down to about seven or eight, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
You didn't get picked, Carl.
Well, you know, I.
We got shot down, Carl. I thought we could've done it.
I did make it through third grade, I should be, no.
Cool.
I didn't check that box.
Bold that in the minutes, please.
Yeah, don't put that, yeah. It's not true, I, I made it to fourth grade. No.
Alright, any miscellaneous correspondence? I know, again, we've.
The railroad emails.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, we have railroad emails to.
Attorneys, developers.
Yeah, there's clearly a lot of, like, quasi lobbying going on against the town council to fund this feasibility study, but as I mentioned earlier in my email, um, I took it upon myself to reach out to the executive office, um, the, of administration and finance. They understand the intent of the governor's goals, they help put together the governor's goals, and for them to tell me, no, it would not make sense for the town to invest local funds in a feasibility study right now, I think that gives me all of the information I need to, to inform my decision. And I appreciate the governor for including Palmer in, in her budget. And I look forward to seeing that in the final budget, so we don't have to spend any local taxpayer dollars on a study that I don't think we had, maybe if we did our own study, we wouldn't have the same vision as what the state has envisioned for studying. So, we'll see how that all pans out, but that's all I have for tonight. Counselors' roundtable.
Also, the only thing I have is, March twenty-ninth is, is Vietnam Veteran Day. The twenty-sixth, AMB, it's, it's not, it's just a place we're having it, but we, this'll be our second monthly veterans gathering for families and whatnot. We had fifty people show up last month.
Wow.
Amazing.
All over, all over. So we've got some speakers coming, we've got a retired colonel coming to do a penning ceremony for any of the Vietnam vets to show up.
Wow.
Um, we're actually, Ludlow reached out, their VSO, Latinos, you know, there's a whole lot of, it's, it's really coming together good. But, um, just putting that out there, it'll be on the signs hopefully soon.
I will let my dad know.
I would just like to, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
No finish, please.
I was surprised he didn't come out last time.
Well, last, was it on February nineteenth? Yeah, that was my birthday.
Ah, good reason.
I kinda trumped on that day. Go ahead, Bob.
No, I was just gonna reiterate what Councilor Sizer said, as far as the rail study, I totally agree. It was gracious that the governor included us in her budget, I did read it in the Republican Friday as well. However, again, I've responded to everyone that emailed me in the same regard, until we have clear definitive information from the state legislative subcommittee, I don't feel it's wise to invest town funds in any type of a study at this point.
Alright, anybody else? I make, um, I make a motion, we adjourn.
So move.
Very welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Good night.